And thank you for joining us on Tuesday, November 15th, 2022. I will ask if you all rise, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We welcome all our guests this evening. Thank you for joining us. Again, for those that haven't joined us, if you want to speak at any point in the evening on a specific topic, we have a sign-in over there, so feel free to do that. If I don't catch you on that, then just grab me and we'll acknowledge you there. So, thank you for joining us again. We have a great agenda tonight. With that, I will acknowledge a special guest, our Eagle Scout candidate, Parker Glass. Parker, yes, if you would go to the mic so our friends at home can...
Hi. Hello, everyone. I just first want to say thank you, Ms. Obie, and the school committee for having me. My name is Parker, Parker Glass. I'm a junior at Pembroke High School. I run track and cross-country. I play in the band. And yeah, I'm working on my Eagle Scout project, and I'm here to present it. My project is building a Gaga Ball Court here at this school. If you don't know, Gaga is a fun game. It's inclusive of all ages. It's very easy to learn. It doesn't require much skill at all. And the more people, the better. I say that from experience. It's always fun with more people. The goal of the game is to use your hands and hit the ball at people below their knees to get them like out. We have looked around, many schools around here have them, and yeah. Going to North, this is where I went for elementary school, and going here, I always felt like recess was lacking activities and playing two-hand touch football got kind of boring after a while. And coincidentally, this is also where our troop 105 meets for their meetings. I wanted to build a Gaga pit here to give back to the school, make something that I know the kids would love to have, and something that I would have loved to have in elementary The Gaga pit is made out of pressure-treated wood, so it should last a pretty, pretty long time. Our idea, or yeah, our idea was to make it on the recess field. We had a few spots in mind, but nothing that stood out too much. The total cost of the project is going to come out to around $1,200, give or take. We have a few fundraising ideas, but primarily, I'm going to ask for donations. I think I can get the wood donated from Lowe's, and yeah. I did have a brief conversation a while back with Principal Swift about my project, and she requested for further approval. And yeah, I believe you guys all have a paper. If you still don't know, there's a picture of a Gaga pit, roughly like what it would look like. I have a few bullet points on it. And yeah, any questions?
Parker, I just have a quick question. Can we move it if we had to?
Um, it's not stay to the ground, but you build it where it is, and it should stay where it is. It'd be hard to move.
Right. Different process for...
Anything else?
Does it have like a floor or like a patio?
So, there's like, everyone builds them different. You can, like, a lot of them have like sand on the bottom, or you can just do dirt, but I think we were going to go along the sand route. It's a little softer. Yeah, it doesn't dust up as much as like dirt would if it's dry. Anything else?
Actually, a couple things. One, this is a great young man. I've known him and his family going back to Scouts with, with my son. So, I'll even throw the first hundred bucks at you when you're raising money, so count on me for a hundred. The only question I have, as the school system, do we have any liability? It's an outside-built thing...
So, it's the same as recess, the kids are covered?
We're covered, okay. That was my only concern, if somebody fell and hit their head on the wood or something, you know, can someone come after us because we didn't technically build it or do whatever? But I'm 100% in favor, and I said, count on the first hundred. How's that?
Yeah. I mean, I've worked, like, my summer job for the past couple of years was working at a camp. They had a Gaga pit. That's kind of where I got my idea because all the kids loved it. And I've never really seen any injuries, you could call it. Like, once in a while, a kid would come with like dirt in his eye or something, but it's nothing like bad like that.
Well, I have to say, where my family camps every summer, you know, we go with a few families, and there's a Gaga Ball pit there, and my daughter loved it. So, like, I'd have to say, every kid on that campground would congregate to the Gaga Ball pit. It was like the center, like, everyone had a blast, and I think it's a fantastic idea. Like, it would be a really fun thing for the kids.
Yeah, obviously, I'm biased. I think I've had one at every one of my Y-camps, so I highly encourage it. I think we even had an inflatable one for our, our after-school program. So, it's a great game. The kids will love it. I think I would encourage, obviously, continue dialogue with the school as to where it's going to be placed and that component. And I know you guys will work all that stuff out, but we're excited to have it, and thank you for presenting it to us.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Parker, I have a letter for you. I'll email it to you, okay?
Is this something we need to bring to...
You don't have to do it.
Thank you for presenting tonight.
The content is riveting. You don't have to stay if you don't want to, but I understand if you do want to.
Yes, for those coming to support, Parker, we appreciate it. But don't feel obligated, yes. Any adjustments to the agenda tonight? Nope, there are none. Communications are good. We've done the bill schedule. Months are good. And with that, do we have a motion to accept the school committee meeting minutes of November 1st, 2022?
移到
Motion by David, second by Sue. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Yeah, we'll bring on the superintendent's report.
Sure. So, the first thing under my report is, we've done now probably quarterly updates for our social-emotional learning updates. There's a whole host of staff in the audience that are made up, that make up our mental health staff across the buildings. Obviously, they work very closely with Jess and our building principals here. I know a couple of people are just going to introduce themselves so you can have a face with the name, but I think our principals are going to do the bulk of the talking for this piece.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. So, as Erin mentioned, we have been doing a social-emotional learning update, which has taken a few different forms, but I thought for tonight, it would be nice to include our support staff, our mental health staff, that are such an integral part of supporting social-emotional learning and our students. So, there'll be three focus areas. Our elementary level, as you know, we started what's called Titan Labs this year, so therapeutic resource rooms, part of our budget process. You allowed for paraprofessionals to support those rooms. So, Michael Murphy will do some presenting and introduce some of the staff here tonight. The middle school will present on what's called the Signs of Suicide, SOS program, a new program that you may have seen come out in Donna McGaragol's weekly news blast as well, but her staff is here, and I'll let Donna introduce them as they present. And then the last piece is in regards to the high school and the Compass program, which has been at the high school for several years, but we did add some additional staff, a teacher this year, so that's allowed us to expand that program. And then another program that we have been doing called Break Free From Depression has expanded a little bit, and we've added some components this year, so we wanted to share on that piece as well. So, I will let Michael take over for the elementary.
Hello, everyone. For those of you that don't know, I'm Michael Murphy, the principal at Habermock, and I work alongside a couple of other building principals. And we actually have a lot of staff in the audience tonight, so I'm only going to introduce the elementary staff, or they're going to introduce themselves, and then I think, Donna, you'll actually introduce the middle school staff. And I don't think there's any high school staff yet tonight, right? Or do you?
Just you.
Just you. So, maybe you could introduce yourself a little bit later. That would be great. So, maybe if I could have the, the paraprofessionals that are associated with the Titan Lab to maybe introduce self, and we'll go with Habermock first.
Hi, I'm Chris Britton. And I'm Judy Block.
We also have our mental health staff, and I'll just have our social workers at the elementary school introduce themselves. Yep?
Hi, I'm Emily Riley. I'm a school counselor and counselor at FINE, so I'm full area social worker at Habermock.
Hi, I'm Steve Amara. I'm a social worker here at DOR.
And last but not least, our, along with the mental health staff, our school psychologist. So, Ms. Delisi, why don't you go first?
I'm a full area social worker at Habermock.
Karen, compare some of the school psychologists I've known.
So, perfect. So, I know we spoke, I think it was the last school committee meeting, just a little bit about the Titan Labs. And we came to you last early spring, and we asked for some support around building a, a support service for our kiddos, a general education service. So, I came to you, we came to you asking for a therapeutic resource room. That was kind of a mouthful. We have since renamed that, the Titan Lab. And so, the Titan Lab exists at each of our three elementary schools. And the lab stands for Learning Adaptive Behaviors. So, the whole idea of this is to really kind of provide in-the-moment support for kiddos, and that's up here on the vision statement as well. It's our, what we'd like to really do is making sure that the kids have what they need to learn and be able to actually be in the general education as much as possible. We definitely have some learners that come to us every single day that are not quite ready to learn, and that's where these fine folks kind of come into play. And they're the ones really on the ground providing the support for the kiddos. They develop amazing relationships with them. The kids are now seeking them out, which has been really instrumental within the program. So, the, again, the goal is to provide a safe area where students can, who are escalated, they can calm right down and be provided with some of those strategies from our mental health staff. There we go. There we go. So, in order to do this, we needed to establish some entrance and exit criteria. And in thinking about kids, it's not always black and white, believe it or not. So, the way that we have entrance and exit criteria runs the same at all three elementary schools through our SST process. So, any of you that have been sitting around this table, you've heard us use this terminology, SST, Student Support Team. And this is where we talk at like a roundtable every single week with our mental health staff, our school nurse, as well as the building administrators, and we talk about kids' needs and what, what they need in real time. And this is how we start to determine who's eligible to access the program. This is not a place where all kids should be going if they're having a hard time on a math test. That's not the idea of this. This is when there's something going on in a child's life that they're not able to be in class, and we need to provide them some coping strategies. So, we've been able to do that pretty effectively. So, we take a look at the data, how much time a child's in there, and then make the determination, has that child received the supports, or the teaching that they need in order to utilize some of those supports to be able to go back into the general education classroom. So, again, we have those weekly meetings that determine who goes in and who comes out, and the students are deemed to have exited the program when they are able to utilize all the supports that we've provided to them and those tools in their toolkit, if you So, I have about three or four slides just about some data pieces, and I'm just going to really break it down for you nice and simply here. The nice thing is, we're seeing, we're starting to see some trends in the data. What you have in front of you right now is Bryanville's data. And what we did is we took the slide about, you know, why are kids coming into our program? And you'll see the number, 267 responses at Bryanville there. That does not mean that there's 267 students that require time in the Titan Lab. Those are 267 instances over the course of a few months where kids have actually gone into the lab, or our support staff have actually met children in the hallway, or met them in their classroom and provided some of that support. So, I don't want people to think, coming away from today's meeting, that, you know, the Titan Lab is a place, it's a location, because it's not. We happen to have a place where we house our staff, but the staff deploys to where the kids are needed, where they need that support. So, some of the trends that we're seeing right now at Bryanville right now, we're looking at the majority of the kids that are utilizing the program have anxiety, but also, a nice data point that we'd like to see right now is a lot of that's also prevention. It's a lot of the check-ins that we're doing from our support staff, and it's that relationship building which is so key. So, that's Bryanville in a nutshell. Habermock looks just a little bit different. Again, all three schools have different kiddos. Habermock, again, we're looking at prevention being the key factor in what we're doing over there. And then we're also seeing kids with dysregulation as well as that anxiety. So, again, anxiety is kind of ringing clear at both of those schools. And then finishing out the elementaries, we have North Pembroke, and what we're seeing there is more of the prevention, which is, again, great to see. That academic struggle, so kids are having some difficulty, I think, at the upper grades a little bit more, you know, you know, making the grade, if you will, within the classroom, but also their frustration tolerance, kind of paired with an anxiety as well, is really, I think, the clientele that we're seeing to come in to access that program. So, you may wonder, you know, so what do we do that's so miraculous in this, in the Titan Lab? So, our staff is here, and we wanted to talk about a couple of the methodologies about, you know, the great work that we're doing within those, within the classroom. So, the first thing we talk about is social, social thinking language. I didn't know if there's anybody in the crowd that maybe wanted to speak a little bit about social language and what that means, or social thinking, and what that means to you.
You just have to go up to the microphone so that it will pick it up for the people at home. Sorry. That'll deter everybody from standing up.
And Erica Pearson is going to stand right up. Thank you, Erica.
I feel like I'm the social thinking person here in the district, anyway. Michelle Garcia Winner is really the founder of social thinking, and it's really a common language that we use. We had Social Thinking Boston come here several years ago to train us, and then we have been training the staff. So, it's really common language that we use with students, all the way from preschool to grade six. And the basic tenet of, of social thinking is, we have thoughts and feelings about other people based on the way they act. So, we use the terminology, expected behavior and unexpected behavior. So, if someone has expected behavior, that means they're making other people feel good about them based on their behavior. I'm standing here, I'm not too close to this gentleman. If I got a little bit too close to him, he might start to feel uncomfortable, then that's pretty unexpected, I'm eliciting a response for him, from him. So, that's basically the tenants of it. There's like thinking with your eyes. How do we know if someone's thinking about us? We're thinking with our eyes, making sure that we're paying attention. And it goes on from there. So, it's really kind of simple and basic language. Once you get the gist of it, it's really something that works well with the students, especially, you know, when we start it at such a young age. Do you have any questions?
So, is this a sense of sort of building empathy and building understanding of their environment, that type of concept?
Perspective-taking, yep. Perspective-taking is really big as well and built into social thinking because we want to make sure that students understand that people have thoughts and feelings about them. You know, so we talk about, like, another example would be having a bubble thought, keeping that thought in, in their thought bubble instead of maybe blurting it out. Getting a reaction moment is another kind of catchphrase. Doing something that's a listening, maybe a negative response from another student instead of a positive response, so.
Perfect. And all three schools' staff have been trained in social thinking, so it's all the same common language that we've been using. Thank you, Erica, for explaining that. Another piece that we, we utilize on a regular basis would be the Zones of Regulation. And I didn't know if our esteemed Mr. Delisi could maybe speak to that. I'm going to throw you right on the spot there, Mike.
Yeah, so, the social thinking curriculum is really kind of multifaceted. It really has a lot of different pieces to it that really covers kind of the whole spectrum of social functioning and social success. The Zones of Regulation is a piece of that puzzle where it really, it teaches kids to become more self-aware of their emotions and their energy level, and it's, it really boils down to a really colorful chart, where there's a blue zone, that's low energy, whether it's tired, sad, depressed, up to the red zone, which is angry, incredibly frustrated, or even really sad. So, the Zones gives the kids a chance to really become more self-aware, and then in turn, come up with strategies to help them regulate themselves, whether they're in the blue zone or the red zone, or the yellow zone is that middle zone, where they're a little bit frustrated, but they're still able to maybe problem-solve and kind of mediate with some help towards solution. So, the Zones is a nice piece for, especially for the Titan Lab, where they're a little bit dysregulated, and they're, they're in a place where they need some skills, strategies to get back to that green zone, which is the good zone, which is where they're able to, to learn and to have success socially. So, that's the Zones.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
I think the last piece I kind of wanted to highlight here would be the social behavior mapping. And I didn't know if Brenda, if you could speak just a little bit to the social behavior mapping, seeing that you have a beautiful poster at Bryanville.
Absolutely. So, social behavior mapping is actually a way to think about behavior with children. So, oftentimes, if we have a student who does something unexpected in the classroom, for example, uses inappropriate language, it's an opportunity to work with them with a visual, to understand what the unexpected behavior was in class, and to understand how it elicited response from the other children. This is within the social thinking, so there's a lot of the language that Erica had spoken about. What response was elicited from the behavior and how that negative response made the student feel? Then on the other side of the poster, you look at how you can change that. So, you look at what was the piece that was the problem? How can you manipulate that? What would be a more positive behavior to show? And how that would play out and what kind of response that would provide socially?
Thank you very much for saying that. And then a couple of the other things that are, you know, kind of mixed in there would be motor brakes, sensory brakes. And the way that kind of plays out is, you know, if you can, if you can think of a kiddo, and it's all about distraction sometimes, and making sure that, you know, they have opportunities to kind of, kind of blow off some of that steam. So, if there's maybe a box that needs to be delivered down to the kindergarten, and it just came in from Amazon or something, sometimes we will utilize that as an opportunity to have that child bring a box down, do the walk in the hallway, get a sense of fulfillment from, you know, helping out the school and things like that. So, you know, those are some built-in kind of motor brakes that we're doing throughout the course of the day. And then one great piece that we actually had a discussion about just last week when we had met as a group, was about how this program is actually helping us build capacity within our general education classrooms. So, the good work that they're doing with kiddos is now viewed by the larger professional staff in schools, and people are like, oh, that's, that's how you do it. They have a little bit more confidence in actually, in working with kids. So, it's having that unintended outcome, which has been great. I think we're all, our eyes just kind of opened to that the other day during our discussion. So, those are some of the things that we do on a more regular basis within the program. I'm almost done, I promise. Again, some of those additional benefits from the lab, above and beyond the building of capacity, would be the increased family collaboration that we're seeing right now. We're finding ourselves being more proactive and reaching out to families and saying, we know that sometimes your child needs a little extra push, but you know what? They did a wonderful job today. And sometimes the positive phone calls as well, coming from the staff from the Titan Labs as well. We're also seeing somewhat of a reduction in administrative intervention, allowing us to have, you know, the ability to do other aspects of our job as well. But it is great working with the, the mental health staff and making sure that all the kids' needs are being met. And then the, the other unattended, unintended consequence of this would have been to, I don't think we realize how powerful the professional development is when we get the mental health staff together. We really have not had that opportunity, and we've already met four times since the beginning of school. These folks now all know each other. They're trading secrets, which is amazing. And we've also had our paraprofessional staff reach out to the building principals and say, would it be time for us to kind of get together? And our response to that was, no, 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 absolutely. So, we're building out times during the month where they can kind of get together to talk about best practices as well. So, we're really happy that everybody's kind of involved and excited for what's to come. With that being said, there's just a couple of nice pictures here of what a Titan Lab looks like. So, you'll see it's very colorful, beautiful. You'll see swings in there. There's a big platform swing. You'll see some balls where kids can kind of, not necessarily bounce, but maybe kind of sit on, kind of de-escu a little bit. That blue thing in the middle of the rug is called a moonwalk, and it's the most comfortable piece of equipment I think we have at all of our schools. I have not really laid in it yet, but I have sat in it. It's pretty comfortable. I probably should have brought it here tonight. So, one thing I wanted to let you know is that all three elementary schools have the same equipment. So, it is standard, standard equipment across all three elementaries, which is great. And then just a couple more pictures would have been some of the things that are hanging on the walls. So, you take a look on the left-hand side, social behavior mapping, what that looks like. So, the kids are filling that in on, on the wall and then able to erase it right after. There's an emotions chart, and then there's the two pictures on the right-hand side of the slide, more about, you know, what are those tools in your toolkit? What can you actually be doing when you're feeling frustrated or anxious? And, you know, the kids can actually take those right off the wall, read them, and actually, you know, take some ownership over the way that they're, they're feeling, and hopefully make a resolution. So, that's the great work that our staff have been doing. I really appreciate you all coming out tonight as well. I think that's it for elementary. Didn't know if you had any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amazing. Nice.
Thank you so much.
So, I'm Donna McGaragol, and my four counselors are here, and they're going to present our program. So, they're going to stand up and make sure their mouth is really near the microphone so if we can hear them tonight and on the video. So, first up is Erin Gaudia. She is one of the school guidance counselors. Behind her is Danielle McLean, the other school guidance counselor, Brianna Kerr. Here we go. The school psychologist, and Cheryl Larson, the social worker. And I will let them take it away.
All right. So, we thought we would start off tonight just by going through our, what our 21st Century Skills classes. I think most of you are aware of it already. It's been run for a number of years at the middle school. But just as a refresher, we teach a course, Danielle and I, to every student. Each student has a class with us, one out of every six days throughout the course of the school year, which means that we do 30 lessons with the kids. We see them 30 times in class throughout the course of the school year. We've broken down what we're, what our plans are for this year, what topics we're going to cover throughout the course of the school year by term and put it up there. I'm not going to bore you with going through every term at this point. I know Donna's already published this in the past. What we want to focus on tonight is our Signs of Suicide program, which is brand-new to us at PCMS this year, which we started this week, actually yesterday, in our classes. So, we're going to run through that a little bit.
No. Totally.
So, I'll just start, and even though the slide's not up there. So, the Signs of Suicide program, SOS, is a suicide prevention program. It's been used in thousands of schools for the past 20 years. Studies have shown that it effectively teaches students about depression and reduces the number of students who self-report suicide attempts by about 64%. So, what we focus on and what we hope the students get out of the program, we're hoping that they learn that depression is treatable, and knowing that depression is treatable helps them to want to search for help if they need help. How to identify depression and possible suicide risk in themselves or in others, in friends as well. And to act, one thing that we'll touch upon later on in slides is the Acknowledge Care and Tell a Trusted Adult. That's basically what the program reinforces with the kids over and over again. So, it's essentially teaching kids what to do if they're concerned about themselves or a friend. And then we want them to know who they can turn to at school for help if ever needed. So, those are basically what they learn through the program, and Danielle's going to talk about sort of how we prepare for it. Sure. So, prior to implementing the program with students, we did have each staff member complete an online training for SOS. We also contacted families to talk about the program and give them some resources, resources that they might need moving forward. As Erin said, we started delivering this curriculum to students this week within the 21st Century Skills classes. In addition to Erin and I, we've also had another counselor present in the room with us, just given the sensitive nature of the topic. We have also made sure to not deliver SOS at the end of any school day in order to allow us to have time to follow up with any students who might require follow-up.
So, how are we implementing this at the middle school? So, students in their 21st Century Skills class watch each appropriate video clips, and then they participate in a guided discussion that's led by me and one of the counselors or Mrs. Larson and one of the counselors. And it's about depression, suicide, and what to do if they're concerned about themselves or a friend. At the end of each class, we're passing out an exit slip, which basically asks students if they can identify people in their lives that they would think of as a support person for them. And also on the slip, they can indicate if they would like a counselor to follow up with them, because a lot of kids have a lot of big feelings after presentations like this. So if they do indicate that they would like someone to follow up with them, that's happening the same day. So that's kind of why we planned not to do it that last block, because we want to make sure we can follow up with those kids same day.
So the, sorry. So the basis of the SOS program is the ACT model. It stands for Acknowledge, Care, and Tell. We're teaching our students and our staff these three steps. So acknowledging is noticing some of the warning signs of depression and suicide. So in the classes and in our staff training, we went through some of those warning signs. A withdrawal from friends and others. I can go through more if you need to know them, but I don't want to bore anybody. We kind of lay those out. The video clip also lets us show kids acting that out. The teachers went through a training, and we were able to see in video clips teachers reaching out and noticing the signs of students. The next step is care. We talk about how to show that we're interested and we're caring about people that may be showing signs of depression and suicide. So those are simple statements that we can make, such as, I care about you, or I've been your friend for a while, or I'm here to help you. So we outline those things that we can say to people that we think may be suffering. And then the tell part is the most important part that we're really trying to teach. What's a trusted adult in your life? Let's think about who a trusted adult is for you. And how would you go about seeking out, finding that trusted adult, and making contact with them? And we brainstorm ways to do that with the kids. So far in the classes this week, this has been a really nice, clear way for our kids to understand that they actually have some tools that they can use when they're feeling like a friend might be not going through such a great time.
Well, and I do want to thank you guys. Obviously, we know the school had a difficult year last year, and the students, this topic is, for many, may be a challenge. And I appreciate that you talked about giving them a chance to process before they go home, right? Because they're probably still carrying a lot from a year ago. And so obviously, we know the need, and it's important, and we appreciate all the work that's being done, and we know that these sort of supports are going to be vital to them as they continue to move on. So thank you.
Thank you. I will talk about the Compass program and some of the things that we've done differently this year. As Jess said earlier, the Compass program has been around for at least six years, and I want to thank once again this committee for supporting the growth of that program by adding the additional resources, specifically in the name of hiring a certified teacher to help us with the program. So the program now is now staffed by two adults. Tessa Overstreet is a certified English teacher. She's the lead of the Compass program, and we maintained the role of paraprofessional this year, and it was Karen Rich. And I'll talk about Tessa and Karen in a moment and how they really helped us grow the program. And so it has been, and still is, a tiered intervention that provides academic support and some clinical support for students who return from a long-term absence. So we define that as five or more days. And so in that way, it's a quiet place for students to get that one-on-one support that they need, sort of like a transition program, before they return to full-time classes after being absent for so long. The goal is always to return as soon as we possibly can. And in the past, we've kind of had a hard, moderately hard deadline to really encourage kids to get caught up, to get them back in. We've changed that a little bit. That deadline is a bit more fluid this year because of what we are now able to offer We do know that some kids, particularly depending upon why they're there, will need more time, and we are now able to support them along those lines. And so our Compass program now has three tiers of service. All right, tier one and tier two were pre-existing, although tier two is a bit modified this year. And so tier one speaks to those students who are returning from some sort of physical illness. Surgery, a broken leg, mono, COVID. They've been out for five or more days. It's physical. And so the goal, of course, at the reentry meeting, which all students have when they come back from a long-term absence, is to organize and track their work. And I've linked in a couple of documents there that we use to help organize and track that work. And then once we organize and track the work, we do have a plan to make it all up, and then we move the student out. And again, we do establish an exit date at the reentry, and there's a form there I've linked in that explains to you how we run those reentry meetings. But the stay for our tier one students is usually brief. It's usually during a study hall or an elective if a student doesn't have a study hall. And I have some data on the length of their stay further on in the presentation. And so there's really no change there, okay? With the exception of those tracking documents, that is all brand-new, and a total credit to Tessa Overstreet and Karen Rich. The tier two support, the tier two students were also pre-existing, although the tier was pre-existing, but we've been able to enhance some of the supports for them. These are our students that are returning to us because of a long-term absence as a result of a social, emotional, or a mental health struggle. Usually that requires, or that means, a student's been hospitalized, and they're coming back to us from that facility. It's a fluid exit date. When we have the reentry meeting, we know that these students are going to need more support, and to say, you've got five days, get in, get out, is not good for anybody. We do set a target date because we want the student to have a target. We want the student to have, to see, you know, the light at the end of the tunnel. But we all know, including the student, that that is fluid. The goal's the same, okay, to reenter students, but it's a much more gradual process. And I've linked in a couple of resources there that we use to monitor their progress while they're there, so we can make an informed decision about when it's time to move the student on. The most important of those three documents is the Transition Support Plan. That goes out to teachers. It's pre-detailed. It talks about the student's profile, potential triggers, potential strategies, so that when they do return to the mainstream, they're far more likely to stay there without any setbacks. Now, we know that that's not always the case, and that is what brings us to tier three. This is a brand-new level of service, thanks to this committee's support for growing the program. And one of the cool things about this, and I use the term "cool," of course, relatively speaking, I don't think it's cool that we have kids that need Level Three. When we were first conceptualizing the Compass program in the summer, we talked about a tier three student being those tier two students that simply aren't ready. We thought they were, and let's come back. Or let's come back on some sort of modified schedule. And that still happens, for sure. But what we learned in the past, well, the first three months of school, is that there is another way to become a tier three student without having to be hospitalized and subject to a long-term absence. We are noticing that there are students who are identifying to us as needing that support without having been hospitalized yet. And we've had some conversations with all of our support staff. Why wait, right? Let's be proactive. Let's be preventative. Let's offer some of these students some of our lower-level supports. And by that, I mean a home base for daily check-ins, whether that be in the morning before school, which is when most of the kids do it, or that be during lunch. So there's a daily connection there with the staff members. And then if they need to be there for a period or two during the day as well, we can support that. And again, I have some data usage numbers that will kind of clarify what I'm talking about in terms of the different types of students who access Compass at the tier three level. When we reenter those students, or when we decide to put a student in as tier three, we often don't even mention an exit date. In fact, of the eight students that are there right now, I believe it's three of them for whom it's just an open invitation, all right, for the foreseeable future, because, you know, their needs warrant that. And so that's by design. And so here is a, here is a data usage chart, and you can see that the highest level of traffic is with our tier one students. We've had so far 20 students enter the Compass program returning from a physical illness. Most of those have been COVID, but it's not a runaway. We've had several students this year with surgeries on the legs, ACLs, feet, things of that nature, and they benefit from that program. And so 20 students so far have used that program on a tier one level. But you'll notice only one has accessed it as tier two. But eight are in tier three, and so the eight students in tier three do not include the one student in tier two. That student just returned to us today. All right, we had not yet had students who were out on long-term hospitalizations or mental health struggles. So that's a good thing, certainly. Those eight students that are using Tier Three are students that have just percolated and identified themselves to us through their behaviors, through their attendance, through their visits with our adjustment and counseling staff, or our assistant principals for that matter. And so you can see the breakdown there for who's using the Compass program and how. This chart talks about the average length of stay. And you'll see I have not included tier two there because it's just that one student right now, and today was her first day. But of the eight students who have, I'm sorry, of the 20 students that have utilized Compass on a tier one level, the average length of stay is eight days. That's that light blue top bar there. And the total periods, or the average total periods is eight blocks, 8.1 blocks. So what that tells me is those students who come back from physical illnesses are in there during their study hall, they work with our staff to get caught up, and they go out the rest of their day without interruption, and we're limiting the stay to about eight days on the average. Now, some, obviously, with averages, are fewer than that, some are more than that. But so those are our quick hitters. All right, get them in, get them out, and move them along. The tier three students of the eight that are utilizing the program as tier three, on the average, they have been part of the program for 24 days on the average, and that's going to continue to grow as each day grows, okay, because that's the purpose of it. Those students, on the average, are using Compass for about 1.7 periods a day. And so that, to me, is also a positive number. Out of study hall, for sure, what happens to a lot of those students is they just, they're stuck in the morning, and they can't get into school. Or we get them into school because they know they can go to Compass. Maybe they, we start at 7:30 at the high school, and so maybe the parents and the student can get themselves there with 7:45, or 8 o'clock, or 8:10, and they get themselves regulated in Compass, and then they move on for the rest of their day. Some of those students are there, without any question, for two or three periods of a day, sometimes more. Sometimes a student just can't get unstuck, and we allow them to stay there for the day because they've been identified as tier three. The work gets sent down to the room, and because we have those two wonderful professionals, the level of instruction they're getting is increased from last year, for sure. And to me, as importantly, the level of emotional support, the self-regulation skills that they're employing there, they're being taught that, and the staff really forces the students to go through that process so that eventually they can develop these coping strategies on their own. What I've done for this committee is just linked in several documents and resources so you can kind of see how we are monitoring things. And the first three are what we use during the reentry meeting. There's a series of resources that we use while they're in there. And then as we are preparing to exit them, there are another list of resources here. So certainly, I'm sure you click through those on your own. And again, all of that was created and brought to us by Tessa. Tessa worked doing this very thing, this very program at Southeastern Regional for seven years before coming to Pembroke, so we feel very fortunate to have her. And Karen Rich is a certified life coach. She has a robust practice that is still booming. She works here all day long, and then she does that in the afternoon and evenings. So the skills that we are teaching our students in Compass are tried and true and research-based and very, very effective. Any questions on Compass and what we've been doing so far this year before I transition to break free from depression?
I think it's amazing, Mark. I just, all these, hate to say, I think back when I was in elementary school, junior high, and high school, we didn't have anything comparable to this. I think situations, of course, being a lot different back then, but this is just, it's so impressive to read and see and know some kids are involved in it. It's outstanding.
Right. Yeah, I think to me, one of the most important parts of it, and it's not certainly earth-shattering, students who get stuck during the school day, in years past, we would work with them, we'd counsel them, we'd try to triage them, but there were times where they would have to, they would have to go home because the kids just couldn't do it, and we really couldn't support them for as long as we needed to. Now, we are keeping kids in the building, and that's where these new level of tier three kids are coming from. That's how it started. One day, early on in the school year, one of the adjustment counselors came to me and said, look, we don't want to send this student home. I know she's not in tier three, or even tier two, but can we put her in Compass for the rest of the day so we can work with her? And of course, right, what a great idea. And so we've just offered that now to more students as the years kind of unfolded.
I know that Suzy's not here, but I did have an opportunity to talk to her before the meeting, again, echoing your sentiments, David. She's just so impressed by how much the program has grown in the past few years. A couple, just one thing she wanted to just be mindful of as we move forward is that, and you said it in the beginning, students often miss a study hall or their elective to do their work in Compass. And she just wanted us to remind ourselves to be mindful of the fact that for students, going to their elective is almost as important, is pretty important to some of them. It's their only peer interaction, it may be their only physical connection to the building. So just being, you know, fluid in our thinking when we're thinking about what periods they're staying in.
Sure. Obviously, the thought process behind that was to have the kids not miss any more core classes, right? They've been up for five days. However, we do work with the student in the reentry meeting, and there have been times where they say, I really don't want to miss band, or I don't want to miss marketing, and we work with them around that for sure. I also want to talk about Break Free From Depression, which is part of our Grade Nine Health and Wellness class. That is a required class. It's the one PE class that students are not allowed to earn their credit from through an alternate means of participating in a high school sport, in large part because of the three-unit Health and Wellness curriculum. We are about to embark on Unit Two there, which is interpersonal relationships. And as part of that, Break Free From Depression is really the central focus of that, okay? It is a universal skill-based curriculum developed by Children's Hospital, and it's education and prevention-oriented, and it's co-taught by our phys ed staff and by our guidance and adjustment counseling staff. We've been doing it for eight years, and this year, our staff has done a lot of co-planning and curriculum revision, really with the advice of Children's Hospital, to amend our curriculum slightly because of the tragic loss of a member of the current ninth-grade class last year in June. They were mindful of that. We were mindful of that, and there were a couple of parts of the curriculum that were really heavy, and Children's was great helping us navigate that and kind of trimming out parts of it that they didn't feel were necessary, given the trauma that these students experienced and are still coping with. Another part of that, by the way, that adjustment, is adding a parent workshop, a night parent workshop, before we embark on that unit. And again, we're embarking on the unit on the Monday after Thanksgiving. So November 28th, we're starting it this coming Thursday at 6:30 in the high school library. Our adjustment counseling staff and guidance staff will be hosting a parent night, previewing the curriculum for Break Free From Depression for the parents who want to know as much about it as they can. And so just to be clear, the Grade Nine Phys Ed course is a semester-based course. We run one semester, well, multiple semesters in the fall, and then multiple more in the spring. If any freshman parent is listening right now or is in the audience, we will run a separate workshop in the spring for when your child is actually in the course in the spring semester. So this workshop here is really, it's for anyone. It's open to the public, of course, but we're really targeting the parents of the ninth-grade students who are currently enrolled in the Grade Nine Wellness class. We're going to do it again in the spring. You know, and I think it's important for the parents who are also wildly concerned about their students' well-being after what happened in June. We want them to have a chance to speak to our counselors, to ask specific questions about that curriculum. We don't want anyone having apprehension about the curriculum. There is a commonly-held myth out there that the more you talk about suicide with kids, you're going to put that idea in their heads. The research says that that's not true at all, and that education and prevention is the best way to deal with these suicidal ideations with students. Also, it's important that the counselors have a chance to Also, it's important that the counselors have a chance to explain in detail what Break Free From Depression is to the parents, okay? It's not a treatment program, or it's not a diagnostic program. It's instead, it's meant to increase students' knowledge of what depression is and some of the signs of suicide. We want to increase their confidence in recognizing those signs in themselves and their friends, and we also want to increase their skills. So once they do recognize those signs, we want them to have the skill set to manage it, to navigate it with themselves and with their friends. It is a three-lesson unit, and there'll be one lesson each day. The first session talks about what is depression, right? All of those psychoeducational terms and definitions of what is depression, what do we know about it? The second session talks about the protective factors and the warning signs, and that really alludes to what we're mentioning back here in the previous slide about building their confidence and recognizing it. Sorry. I want to go back. I can't see that far.
Down the bottom.
Whoop, there it is. Sorry. Just want to go back, Jess. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, I'm sorry about that. So the first session is what is depression, the second one is are those protective factors, and the third is the coping skills and where to get help. All right, and again, on the previous slide, I talked about increasing the students' confidence and then in their abilities. And that's what Session Two and Session Three we'll talk about. Embedded within Session Three is a depression screener that all students will take. I want to talk about that here on this slide. That screener was created by Boston's Children's Hospital. It's modified for teens, and it's not a diagnostic tool, all right? To be clear, our school staff does not diagnose students, but rather it's an educational tool where students can perform a self-assessment on themselves. It's digital, there is a counselor that can monitor that in real time. And one of the questions on there, in fact, on each session, it asks the student if they want to talk to someone about what they're learning here and maybe their own depression. So in real time, our counselors will be able to see that, and they'll be able to immediately meet with those students. Otherwise, the screener, the tool here, is something our counselors will look through, for sure. And any student whose responses to the screener have reached a certain threshold, the counselors are sure to communicate that with families so that families can make a decision about what to do next in terms of referrals and outpatient therapy and things of that nature. So that's all happening, we get to Thanksgiving for our fall semester ninth-grade Health and Wellness students.
Questions for me?
This is great. I mean, I think as a parent of a ninth grade, I really feel how important this is, and grateful that this is a priority.
Yeah.
So thanks so much.
That's great, I appreciate that. I do really hope that we get a lot of parents out there on the 17th. I think it's really a really important night, so that parents can really feel free to ask all those questions that they have. I know there are lots of them, and I fully understand them, so.
I think the one question I just have is, how does SOS work with Break Free From Depression? And how does the curriculum and what they're learning in the eighth grade then work into this piece in the ninth grade? And how does that build support? Is there any at this point? Is that, is there a discussion on that?
There is certainly a lot of overlap, right? They're very similar programs, for sure.
The Act is a little cleaner, and I don't say cleaner is the wrong word, but like, we are doing more depression awareness. Our, it's a one-unit lesson in the eighth grade, in the seventh and eighth grade this year, and then it builds deeper and goes deeper into the ninth grade. We also work on coping skills and some of the other pieces, but it's not necessarily tied to the SOS program.
We did look in, I did contact Children's in regards to Break Free From Depression when Donna was looking into other programs. They don't have a program made for, you know, younger K to eight students, so we started exploring other. They do recommend it could be given at like an eighth grade or 10th grade, but because we do it in ninth, we were exploring other programs.
It could be eighth grade, but the material in SOS is very appropriate for middle school. The students in the videos look appropriate, and it feels that it will go to a skill level and the professional training for the staff was actually excellent training, which you don't always get. So we really, we got a lot of really positive feedback, that the staff felt really comfortable with the training and feeling more confident.
I just think one of the best parts about all the Break Free part, if you watch it in action, I've been up in the library, we're doing the library because there's so many students and so many staff members. While the Phys Ed teachers and the counselors are in there and they're actually instructing, there's one dedicated counselor predetermined before each class who sits back and just observes. And she's looking for student reactions, she's looking for signs that students may, you know, be bothered by what they're learning, what they're covering, and it's, there's immediate support for those students right there. So they just collaborate so well, it's a fine tool machine up there, it's really wonderful to watch. Very impressive group.
Well, I want to thank the leadership, and I want to thank all the teachers, all you guys for coming out tonight. Hopefully, you feel how we value this, right? We feel this is important, we've invested in this as a district because we feel it's a tremendous resource that we need in our district. So you guys are carrying that out on a daily basis, and we really appreciate all the work you do. So thank you for being here tonight, and thank you on a daily basis for what you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we'll post these slides on the website, there's a whole bunch of links that Mark developed, so if anyone's interested in kind of going through it again, the slides will be with the recording of the video. I'll say the same to you that I said to Parker, the content is riveting, but you don't have to stay. I understand you both get up early. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time, folks.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Great job, great presentation.
Do you want to start with the UN stuff?
No.
I'm going to think the big fear now is just that you should. I'm glad you got out of here, because they, hey, let's refer them to.
Go home, stay, late.
Weeks and months.
So the next thing in my packet for you all is a consideration of approval for the overnight field trip request for the Model UN. The trip is scheduled to go February 10th through the 12th, obviously. That has shifted at times depending on weather in those months, but the details for the conference are listed there. The students are going just into the Copley in Boston to participate with other high schools in the Model UN, so.
Is this school vacation week?
No, School Vacation Week is the week of February 1st.
Okay.
And everything's back on track. I know last time we had these discussions.
Right, there's no vaccine, none of that.
Yeah, everything's back.
I'm so grateful that we're at this place where we can just approve a normal.
Exactly, exactly. So do we have a motion to accept the overnight and out-of-state travel request form for Model UN?
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. So further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
The last thing I just wanted to share with you all under my report is just some feedback on the roundtable series that we've been holding. So we've had two so far. We had a social-emotional learning roundtable, which each of the roundtables has an evening and a day component to it. So for social-emotional learning, we did an evening, and we did an afternoon, so 1:30 to 3:00. We had about 25 parents register for that roundtable. I get it, people are busy when it comes up to be that day, not everyone can make it on that day, but we did have about 10 or 12 folks that did join us over the course of those two days. We had some great conversation around some of the stuff we've talked about tonight. You know, parents were great in sharing their experiences, asking questions. I think one of the big takeaways from both groups was just around communication. Some of the stuff that you heard both Erica Pearson and some of our elementary social workers and mental health professionals talk about tonight around social thinking, zones of regulation, parents were looking for more shared language that they could use at home. So, you know, the weekly updates that we send, or a lot of our teachers send, you know, forecasts of the week or whatnot, could we incorporate some of what's happening during the day so that they can, you know, reinforce it at home? And we talked a lot about what character education looks like at the elementary schools, and, you know, obviously, parents are wanting us to share, you know, this week we're working on empathy, here's some things you could talk to your student about. All of us here at this table have had elementary students, and usually when you ask them how their day was, the answer is usually quiet, nothing, they remember the bus or lunch. So this is an opportunity to spark a conversation with your student if you're talking about the character trait of responsibility and whatnot. So there was some really great feedback on that. The second roundtable was just last week, this time we did an evening, and then we did a morning session, so we did 9:30 to 11:00. Again, we had about 12 families register, we only had a handful of folks come over the two of those days, but it was also excellent conversation. We talked primarily about accelerated offerings at our elementary school and our middle school. We talked about the middle school elective model, and we also talked about the pathways program at the high school, what the first year is looking like, what we're looking to do in the future. As you can imagine, we've received the most feedback in regards to the elective model at the middle school, so that will be part of the conversations that we have administratively. I'm optimistic that we'll be sharing with you some sort of restructure of that schedule moving into the spring, but I can say that, you know, just a lot of the folks that joined us at that roundtable in particular also work in education in other districts. There's not a ton of middle school schedules out there, right? So just kind of looking at what's out there and seeing how we can make it work, so more to come on that. We have two more roundtables scheduled. We'll have a technology roundtable the first week of December, and then the last one is school safety. We had originally had communication on there as one of them, but we have been getting feedback about communication in each of them, so I think it just naturally finds its way kind of into the other four topics. So the goal was to have all of those completed prior to the budget cycle, and we are on track to do that, so.
That's great.
With that, we will move into our subcommittee updates. So policy sub.
Sure, so these are just the second reads for the items that we discussed at the last meeting, so. Policy GBAA, sexual harassment, was just the update to the policy that we discussed last time, looking at the changes in the laws and making sure that our policy aligns with the legal requirements associated with Title IX and a couple of the other acts that you can see that are referenced at the back there.
Seeing as there's nothing new there, and I will accept a motion for approval of revisions to Policy GBAA, sexual harassment, Title IX grievance procedure, and revisions to Policy JIC are anti-burying regulations.
So moved.
Second. And a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
So at your next meeting, which I think is December 6th? Yes, December 6th and the 13th. I'm going to give you just a budget process overview and timeline. Usually, we kind of rush through that. There's generally a little bit more institutional capacity on the committee when it comes to the budget cycle this month, and I think that we all just really have.
We appreciate that.
Really, really understand the process and that, you know.
I don't have the most, I don't have the history that Michael did, so.
Right, right. And I think, you know, again, you know, Mike is doing a part for him and his family, and we're so appreciative of the time that he spent on the committee, but there is a ton of institutional knowledge that leaves with him. And I just want to make sure you all have the opportunity to kind of go step by step through the process, ask questions, be a part of it. So I'll give a more lengthy overview than I have in the past. And for the second meeting of the month, we'll start to tackle the technology.
Are we going to discuss the possibility of appointing a committee member? I know we were talking about, should we wait for the election cycle, or should we just? My thought is really about if we have, it's such a huge commitment anyways, right? And I'm worried that if we don't appoint somebody and just get someone's feet wet through the budget cycle, that, because it is a lot, you know? I mean, I know from experience, it's a lot.
Do you want to put that on the agenda for the sixth to discuss as a committee what you want to do for next steps?
Please, yes.
For the budget process piece, should we now try to get Representative Cutler?
So, not for this piece, but I do think that we should start reaching out to them. Usually, they like to come to us after the governor's budget is released, so that's the third Wednesday in January, so starting to look at their calendars in February and March, it's a better time for them to come, they have a little bit more information than they would have really in early December. I think, I think you're the liaison?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, so just reaching out to you February, March.
How soon you want to get them, but I don't have meeting dates after the first of the year, so it's kind of, hey, you're free on Tuesday in February.
Yeah, I mean, I would stick to the first and third and see if we can get them on those, and we can work around that.
And then for the subcommittee meetings that Mike is no longer going to be at?
Right.
Like, are we just doing the alternate?
Does it slide to the alternate at this point?
That's what I was hoping you all would be okay with that, okay?
I mean, I'm fine.
Without changing the list, we can use the alternate in the instance that an alternate is unable to participate, we can always use the chair, also that's part of your bylaws, so.
Sounds good.
There's one other thing I want to talk to you about as far as future meeting dates and topics. So I have been here for 12 years, and the reason why the committee meeting starts at 7:00 is because there are several folks on the committee that were unable to get here before 7:00. I don't know if there's any appetite to move to 6:00 or 6:30. To you guys, I know we did get a little bit of feedback in the roundtables about people that wanted to participate more at this level, but it's, you know, sometimes we're talking at 9:00, 9:30 at night, so.
Yeah.
I'm very open to moving it to whatever works for the committee, for everybody else. I have a flexible schedule and connect whatever works.
And I'll say the same, if I can help on any of the policy subs, my schedule's pretty much my own. You know, Fridays can be a little tough, but beyond that, the rest of the week's usually pretty good.
Yeah, and my current work environment is okay.
Do you want to try and do December 6th at 6:00 and see how it goes?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. All right. All right. Suzy, you know, I did run a vice.
Get everybody home a little sooner. So our next meeting will be at 6:00. We'll try things a little earlier next year. Get everybody home on time.
We might want to highlight that with a little asterisk or something.
Yes.
Please note, yes.
I actually think it's a great idea because it gets dark out.